City of Harrison, City Council Meeting for January 17th, 2023. At this time, we'll ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Maintain the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I'd like to invite Pastor Mark Garrett with Legacy Christian Church to provide the dedication this evening.
Well, good evening, you all. Right before I do pray, just I was thinking of today and the coming here this evening, and thanks for the invitation of, you know, what is it that you all need in life? There's lots of things, of course, but one that came to my mind was wisdom. And so this evening, I want us to pray that God just gives you the wisdom that you need this year in your own personal lives, not just, but all of us, that the personal wisdom that we need and decisions that we make. And James, probably the brother of Jesus, most people believe, wrote this one time to his church when he said, "If you lack wisdom, ask God, and he'll give it to you graciously." So let's ask him. "God, you are a good God who loves us, cares for us, and graciously wants to extend your wisdom to us." So this evening, we stop and we pause and we ask for your wisdom. Lord, for each one of us here, that you would give us the wisdom and the decisions that we need to make, those personal things that are in our lives, the challenges that we are faced with so often. Lord, we confess that so often what we do is we go on with our own wisdom and instead of pausing to think and to ask you, we just go moving ahead. So we stop this evening and we pause and we say, "God, we need you in our lives. We need you in this community." God, I pray for each one of these community leaders, God, that you will give them the wisdom that's necessary. Lord, to be quick to listen, to be slow to speak. And Lord, when they speak, may they speak not just their words, their thoughts, but God, may you speak into their hearts and into their lives. God, you know the plans that are before us this year. God, some of those things we are not even yet aware of. God, we lay those at your feet. God, we pray for your blessing upon this community, upon our nation. God, may we be the people that shine your light to the others who are around us. In your son's name we pray. Amen. Thanks, y'all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Egner.
Here.
Mr. Grubbs.
Here.
Mr. Samuels.
Here.
Ms. Dole.
Here.
Mr. Maynes.
Here.
Mrs. Wilson.
Here.
First item this evening is the approval of the council meeting minutes from January 3rd, 2023. So move. Second. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Maynes.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yeah.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Here. Yay.
We'll go to the guests and visitors. Shannon, could you introduce the Greater Harrison Chamber Member of the Month and give us the update?
I don't think anyone here is from the Chamber. However, we do have a business Chamber Member of the Month, DWA, which is right up the hill, probably past their signs, which are always nice and has some good message for the community. Bob Grayway is here, and I'm going to invite him up to tell us a little bit about the company.
Thank you for inviting us, and the Chamber inviting us. Before I talk about the company a little bit, I kind of want to recognize the fact that some of the people that are in the room, when I was young, I can remember going Friday nights at La Rosa's, and I don't think we ever paid for a pizza, and we bought, we had a lot of them.
Yeah, that's true. I've gotten a few free pizzas, yeah.
It's interesting, because I grew up in this area. I started this business in 1988 with another person who's retired, and now my family's in the business. But we're just, we're proud to be citizens that have a business in Harrison, because it's always been critical to me to stay into this area. When I bought the business outright in '15, we went from Alliance, Ohio, and still have an office there, but we basically moved most of the operation down here, and we're continuing to grow. So, and a lot of that growth has to do with the schools. We've done a lot of work with the schools. We've done a lot of work with Gene and the Rec Commission. So we first appreciate everything that Harrison's done for us, my business, and we plan to be part of the community for a long time. So, the other thing as far as the business itself, we're a retail, commercial, park and recreation company. We do anything. When I started, it was just playground equipment, probably 10 sets in a catalog, to now we do splash parks, shelters, just about anything that grows out of the ground, that's a piece of equipment. So that business has grown substantially. We've got, how many? Eight full-time crews in it, at least all. So the business is, it's really prospered, and a lot of it has to do with just the values of growing up in this community, and we've tried to stick to that. So didn't want to get real far deep in the woods. A lot of, a lot of the people we've worked with were very appreciative of it. Anytime the phone rings and somebody calls, Mr. Mayor Meyer, we went on a tour, what was it, about three or four years ago? So just on behalf of our company, we're just proud to be a part of this and appreciate the thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Hey, Bob, I have a question for you. You still play tennis?
Well, I have a question.
Or have you moved to pickleball?
Well, I took tennis lessons about two years ago, three years ago.
Yeah.
It went really well inside, and then we came outside and I had to move, and it was kind of like, okay, what's the pickleball thing all about? And I played with him, and that's like Kelly Leep from The Bad News Bears. He just spends his time going around trying to make me look like an idiot.
So a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation from the American Legion.
Mayor, if you'd go over to the mic along with Gene. The American Legion this month would like to donate to the Harrison Mayor's Fund $2,284.20.
Don't forget the 20 cents, Jerry.
Okay. Now, I always forget the amount, so we can pull it up here. Let me do it. Okay. Lost sound for a minute there. Jerry, if you want to repeat that.
Sorry about that.
We lost the sound for about a minute there.
While you were talking, you might want to repeat what you said.
Probably a good thing, isn't it?
Okay.
No, we, no, we have money to contribute, and if you've got a 501(c)(3) in Harrison and you need money, please write us a letter. We are writing to our Department Charities Board, which I, Gene and I both sit on this year, and we're going to be requesting enough money to pick up four AEDs for our community. And the total of that is somewhere around $13,400, and we will find out this weekend if they grant that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. We'll move into the business portion of the meeting at this time. The first item is to vote on the resolution accepting annexation of certain land to the city of Harrison, Ohio, from Harrison Township, specifically the Wisebrook property.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion on this item?
Do we have any idea what the intent with this property is?
They've had a couple different presentations, but I think currently they're looking at potentially residential or selling it, developing it.
The previous owner actually was working with the developer this year.
The owner of the property actually had been working with the developer some years ago for residential use that was not favorably looked upon, and we told him that that's something that we didn't feel comfortable taking to plan and commission and council. So they scrapped those plans. As you can see on the drawing above you and behind the residence, the property right there is next to M1. So we think that that might be a good transition for a small office use or some kind of residential that's not impactful to the residents who live along Corner Brook. As you can see, there's an R3 piece of ground at the triangle there on West Road across from the fire station. So it's next to industrial and it's next to residential. So we don't have any uses that they have said they want to bring. They know that it's important to have it in the city because of utilities and access and things like that, that they might want to pursue when and if they bring any kind of development. But we have had no proposals.
There is a bit of a challenge on the sewer getting to that property, because Corner Brook currently does not have a sewer on it.
So they would, they would have to bring it down, basically Corner Brook from West Road, and that's a fairly, you know, it's a good price, good cost. So they're going to have to have something that would be...
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
The property owner would be responsible for that, correct?
That's correct.
Not the city.
Right. So, but they want it to be in the city. It may be in the city and sit there for three or four years before we have a proposal, but they wanted it to be in the city, so.
And we are annexing it in as R0, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And if we wanted to do a use other than residential, it has to go?
Planning, commission, and then council for rezoning. So it would be, R0 is a placeholder.
Go into the jet.
Depends. I mean, it wouldn't necessarily have to, depending on the use, and if it sits there for years and they want to develop it commercially, it probably would not have to go into the jet, so. And as I mentioned, if that's something that you do annex and you'd like us to add it to this, we could do that right away, so that these three maps, we only have three, so we didn't spend a lot of money getting these printed, and we could get more maps printed, so.
Just get a red pencil.
That way, we don't have to take a marker to it.
Bring a marker.
R0, we can just put it right in there. So, anyway, thank you.
Any other discussion on the item? We would like that, if we have a positive vote, we would like it on the current map. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yeah.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
That's Resolution 1 of 23.
First one. Our next item is a vote on ordinance for zoning changes. Title is "An Ordinance Amending Part 11 of the City of Harrison's Codified Ordinance in the Zoning Code Map." We had a public hearing prior to the council meeting this evening. We discussed multiple different subsections of Chapter 11 and went over the changes, the updates to the zoning map. At this time, if there's any, if we have a motion, we can take that for approval or against it. It came with a favorable recommendation from council, or planning commission, I'm sorry.
Can we move for approval?
We have a second. Second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? There were some points made throughout the public hearing on some different topics throughout what was presented. And would you like me to point out all the specifics? So what we need to do is we need to have discussion on the items that we would like to amend and what's been proposed, and then Mr. Wilson could amend his motion to accept those amendments.
Anybody make a motion to amend?
But we need to, we need to discuss what the amendments are first.
So should we discuss, like, just where, where a word changes?
Everything we talked about in, in the public hearing.
So I propose to amend it by removing vegetable gardens are permitted in rear yards only. And I also propose, sorry, that was 1167.09c. And then I also would propose an 1167.09e to add parking in front of lot in the description. And then, in the, in the 114306 general use, number 18, we want to move that, we want to move the automotive supply to conditional uses, C, conditional uses, number four, to add that under any automotive use.
Are there any other proposed amendments?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make, propose an amendment to add any business, what has a, their primary business is a vape or smoke shop, add that to the conditional use under Section 114306.
We'll have to add a definition for smoke/vape shop also to the section. Since it's not currently defined.
And then we need to unscratch A under 116706, because that's not going to change.
That's currently noted, it's being deleted, and it needs to be not noted, that, in that manner. The other items to discuss with regard to amendments to what has been proposed? Mr. Wilson, would you like to amend your motion?
Technically, anyone can amend the motion. Then we would vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion as amended.
Okay. Well, would somebody like to?
Like to make a motion to approve?
To amend the motion.
To amend the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so a vote on amending the original motion. Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Okay, so now our original motion has been amended, and we need to vote on passage of the original motion.
As amended.
As amended.
Well, do we, how do we sort that out? Because some of the amendments I'm good with and some not so good with.
Then people that aren't can vote against the motion.
Yes.
Because the amendment is all encompassing.
Yeah, so it's kind of a mixed.
Which one don't you like?
The conditional use on the, on the vape, the conditional uses and the permitted uses, I mean, we're adding, we're making our zoning code more restrictive, and so the general idea of that, I'm not sure I'm in agreement with. Does that make sense?
That would be the overall objection to the restriction.
Like, striking the vegetable gardens, I'm, I'm up for that, and Councilman Egner also mentioned the parking lot. That makes sense to clarify that issue. The correction that Councilwoman Dole mentioned about making that, kind of that typo correction, that's great, but, yeah, I'm trying to...
The other two primary amendments were to...
The zoning map is good.
But the, well, the amendments involve moving smoke and vape shops into a conditional use.
Is there a smoke and vape, vape shops?
They're not currently defined.
Not listed at all?
It would be general retail.
Yeah.
So we would identify them specifically and then move them as a conditional use. That was one of the portions of the amendment, and then the other one was automotive uses to make automotive, like part stores, supply become part of the automotive uses overall and move them out of permitted to conditional.
And then, as it was written, we are talking about moving car washes and automotive sales and service out of permitted uses into?
Conditional.
Conditional uses, and that's making our zoning code a bit more restrictive.
Okay.
You know, I'm probably going to pontificate a little bit, which, we'll get on my soapbox. But I would encourage all of us, tonight's not the night to strike our zoning code from the books, but there's, there's an interesting book out there about how, it's called Arbitrary Lines. I sent a text message to a few of the council members, they have phone numbers, and those I don't have phone numbers for, you can take a look at it. But it just talks about how, you know, zoning has broke the American city, and if you look at Houston, they don't have zoning, and Houston works, and works in a phenomenal way. And I'm not saying that we need to be Houston, but maybe we ought to, you know, take a look at what we're doing with zoning in general. And that, that's just kind of me getting on the soapbox for a minute, so maybe this is something that really should be discussed at another time. So just so you kind of know where I'm, I'm coming from on that, is I'm halfway through the book and still trying to sort it all out, but there's a lot of good things being said there about, you know, the good intentions of zoning, but we know how good intentions are sometimes, so. All right, I think I said enough.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Grubbs.
Yay.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Nay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yay.
Egner.
Yeah.
Motion carried. Do we have any other?
That's Ordinance 1 of 23.
Any, any other items to add to this evening's agenda? We have a scout present this evening. Would you like to tell us anything or say anything this evening? Just here to...
You were kidding, right?
More than welcome.
You're just here to get, earn one of your badges, I'm sure. I hope that you learned a little bit this evening. We'll move into the reports. I'm looking forward to a very productive year this year. We just had a very productive meeting, good discourse, disagreement, but came to a final agreement. I think some of these changes are going to be impactful to our city in a very positive way, others will probably go pretty much unnoticed. But the goal is to make our city better, stronger, and more resilient, and if Mike has a good, good valid point there, we can look at that and maybe ascribe to it, but there's seven people here, and we make decisions as a body.
Sure.
So there's always room to learn and grow.
And, and I put that out there just as, I read the book, and I'm halfway through it, and I haven't drawn a whole lot of conclusions with it, but it's maybe something that, you know, we all ought to kind of look at and rethink, and, and I need to figure out how to articulate it as well, so.
Wait till you finish the book, Lanis.
You're absolutely right, yeah, and I think that was a little bit of what I was trying to say.
Yeah, I got you.
And I'd also like to very much thank the American Legion for their support of the Mayor's Fund. Over the last year, it's been phenomenal, and I think it's going to continue in that manner. The Mayor's Fund's been doing more assistance to the community than it has in the past, and with the support we're seeing from the American Legion, that's going to continue. That's all I have this evening. Do we have a report from the Law Director?
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Do we still have our sound? Good. Okay. Mr. Wilson.
Yes, we had a planning commission meeting on January the 10th. Wasn't much to discuss, although we did approve the December amendments. We did elect the chairman, Mr. Graff, and vice chairman, Mr. McNerdo. That was all we had on that. We had a fire department meeting this evening. We learned that this year in instance, we've had 3,200, 695 Division of Fire and Rescue, 2,595 from the Division of EMS, which is up about 500 from last year, so it's a big increase. We did get a donation from the Moose Lodge to the Fire Department of $1,517.43. We want to thank them for that, that help. We do have signed contracts now with Harrison Township and Indiana in place. There is a civil service test exam starting January the 16th through January the 27th, excluding weekends. It'll be held from 9 o'clock to 15:30. That's 3:30 for you civilians, at the Community Center on George Street, and there will be free CPR training the entire month of March for residents of Harrison. The American Legion, as I said before, we're trying to get four of the AEDs, and when we get them, the fire chief has promised us that he will have classes, and we're going to make it. If we give you one, it's mandatory, mandatory, you go to the classes to learn how to operate it, and I thank him for that. The only other thing I have, if you're not busy after the council meeting, I'll be making my singing debut on the rocks. I don't know if that's good or bad. She'll tell me later.
So you were serious about that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You're singing tonight at OTR?
Come down, come down, listen.
It's one and done.
I just don't, hope it don't, don't turn into the Gong Show.
Mr. Egner, do you have a report?
I have no report, Mayor.
Mr. Grubbs, do you have a report this evening?
Just a couple items, Mayor. One, I do have a Hamilton County Emergency Management Board meeting that I'll be reporting on at the next council meeting, that's this coming Monday at 4:30. I, I want to sound on what you were talking about with our discussion. You know, a lot of times I sit here and I think, you know, so many ways zoning has spun out of control, so I can empathize with a lot of, a lot of what you're talking about, but then we also run into problems with, like Whitewater Township's facing, or homes that are not properly managed. So there's a proper balance that we have to, we have to strike when we're making decisions up here, and, but I think it all happens with the discussions, you know, and then sounding off to the community and finding out what's going on. So it was the same thing with extending the hours in the DRD, listening to business owners and what they're wanting, as well as community members around them. So that's part of the fun of what we do, but other than that, that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Samuels.
Yes, I do, Mayor. The Police Committee did meet tonight. The meeting was relatively quick, so usually that's a good thing for the Police Committee, but the monthly crash, or traffic crash report had 22 public roadway accidents and one private property for a total of 23 accidents. The Sundance RMS system, the training has been completed. The last piece of that is the migration from the old RMS stat system, so it's essentially a data dump that will be completed this week, and all the training's completed. At this point, it's just moving forward and letting the officers get comfortable with working it within that new system. The Sandusky Tower City Band Radio, they are awaiting radio parts to be delivered for installation of the replacement unit. The Beards and Badges, the annual cancer fundraiser continues through the end of this month. I think the recipient has been identified, so they will get a nice little donate, nice little donation from the police department. We do have one officer that continues to be out on leave, so we do wish him a speedy recovery. We currently have no officers that are out due to COVID-19, and at this time, there are no police retirements or transfers that we are expecting in 2023, so that's a good thing. Maintain the status quo with the staff there, which they do a wonderful job. Our next Police Committee will be the third Tuesday in February. One thing I do want to announce, we are having our Finance Committee next week, so that will be on Tuesday, and that will be at 4:30. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Dole, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Mayor, I do. We had a social media meeting this morning at the Coffee Peddler. We primarily talked about the Voice of Our City document that can serve as a set of guidelines for our public communications in the future. The goal of it basically is just to try and keep everything with our messaging consistent, as well as the fonts and colors of our logo and things like that, to make sure that everything that comes from us looks the same and is consistent throughout. So social media members of that committee are going to review this for the next couple weeks. The city video is getting revamped, and that should be done by midsummer. deserve recognition, feel free to fill out that form on our website. The next IT meeting will be at 5:15 p.m. on February 7th, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Maynes, do you have a report?
Mr. Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Mrs. Wilson, do you have a report this evening?
I do, I'll take Mike's time. Thanks, Mike. I'd like to report.
Mrs. Wilson.
I appreciate that. I'd like to report on the Harrison Recreation Commission. We met on January the 11th, and we did a lot of planning for events coming up, to report on some of the district events. Their food truck rally will be on May the 20th. On July the 8th, there'll be music on the avenue. September the 9th will be Taste of Harrison, and October 28th will be Halloween on the Avenue. For the Harrison Recreation Events, our Easter program will be on April the 8th, with starting at 8:00 a.m. with a breakfast, 10:00 a.m. games, and 11:00 a.m. to 11:01 will be the Easter egg hunt. Usually tastes. And our garage cleanout, we're planning to do that on May the 6th. Summer Fun will be July, June the 13th through July the 27th, so it'll be six weeks, Tuesday through Thursday. Our coordinator, Holly, is returning again this year, and our registration dates will be announced shortly. On July, July the 4th, which will be a Tuesday, will be our parade and our activities here at the Community Center. We have extended a invitation, and it has been accepted, to Archie Mason, a former city council member and mayor, and he is very thrilled, so. Cruisin' will be on August the 12th. We haven't determined the site yet, but that will come out in a little while. The Citywide Yard Sale will be September the 9th. Spooktacular will be October the 29th. The Christmas Parade will be December the 2nd. Our summer concerts here at the Community Center will be June 13th, June the 27th, July the 18th, and August the 1st, and we're currently working on what bands will be playing here. And we're coming up with some new ideas for something for everyone here at the Community Center. We're trying to think of a summer family event. We might have a carnival, and we'd like to work in a dog event. So, that's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
A lot of interesting and exciting things. Thanks, Gene. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Roll call, please.
Samuels.
Yay.
Dole.
Yay.
Maynes.
Yay.
Mrs. Wilson.
Yay.
Mr. Wilson.
Yeah.
Egner.
Yeah.
Grubbs.
Yeah.
Stand adjourned, thank you.